Good evening. Regular session, Mayor and City Council meeting, 6:00 P. M., Wednesday, December 2nd, 2020, City Hall Complex. I call this meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam clerk, will you please?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you very much. Before we get started, I'm gonna say a few words and I'm gonna have two letters here. And naturally, they're pardons. I'm gonna be pardoned, Mr. Valona first, and Mr. Andres Yan. Whatever you committed in the past four years, you guys are okay. I wanna, I wanna actually thank you very much. You guys were part of a great team for the city. You did the best job you could do for the community of Nogales. The dialogue I had with you, Mr. Valona, in the past two years was great. It was a learning experience for me, and I'm sure it was a learning experience for everybody because you have a lot of knowledge, institutional knowledge, and everything you've done for the community. I wanna thank you very much for that, the work you've done.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Andres Yan, you too. You've done a lot of work for the city, and you should be proud of the work you've done. And I'm sure everybody in the city of Nogales and all the members of the City Council and employees of the city also are proud of you guys, and thank you very much. And even though we're not gonna have, I don't know for how long we're gonna be doing this with the COVID, you guys are welcome here at City Hall. My office is your office. Whatever you need, you think that should be brought forth to the community, please do that, you know, because it is important for us, and we're gonna, we're gonna have a great team also next year. And let's just continue working forward with the team. And again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Number three.
Mr. Mayor.
John.
If it would be okay, if we can deviate from the agenda and do number three after we do discussion item number three.
Presentation on?
Number three.
On number three?
If you don't mind, sir.
All right. So we'll go with presentation, discussion, direction, and possible action. Next step, city annex building.
Mr. Mayor, the City Council, the City Council, Mayor and Council approved a contract with B.A. Builders a while back to start the process of the city annex building to move finance and the courts over to the building. The first step of it has been completed. There was a conceptual drawing plan, which you have in front of you today. It's been approved by staff, and we're ready to move forward to our step two. Step two, there is a financial consideration that will, if you approve these conceptual plans tonight, we'll be bringing back a budget adjustment because we have not budgeted for step two. Step two has a price tag of $36,761, and that would be to bring us structural drawings and plans to move forward with construction. But more importantly, it'll give us a good construction dollar cost estimate to move forward with the actual building.
And that's for the whole building or just, if we wanted to do just the courthouse?
Yeah.
How's that gonna work?
So that would be the engineering plans for the entire building because you can't really segregate it because electrical, electrical, both floors. But when we get to the building documents, then we might be able to look at those dollars, budgeted dollars on there. If we decide to move forward with just the top floor, the bottom floor, that would be the time when we could look at those budget considerations, Mr. President. We have, the judge is available. She's in the wings outside if we need to talk to her about the plans itself. And then the architect who actually put the plans together, Mr. Bueno, is on the screen. Can you hear us, Mr. Bueno?
Yes, sir. I can hear you well.
Okay.
Thank you for being with us and giving me the name.
Okay, thank you, sir. So, Mr. Mayor, if you have any questions, it'd be to the judge, Mr. Bueno, myself, we're all there. What we're looking forward is your approval of the conceptual plan, so I can bring back to you a budget amendment because the $36,000 is not identified in this year's budget.
Yeah, well, before we start a discussion, do I have a, I need a motion now.
Alright, motion, you go ahead.
Yes. Do I have a second? Second, alright. We're gonna go with discussion. I understand, you know, you and I have sat down and talked about the $36,000. Basically, there's very, very little to say on that except that we should, and members of the council, approve this so that we can proceed. You know, and naturally, the next step, when it's, when we start talking about the construction phase of it and the cost of that, that's the one we're gonna have to seriously sit on and talk about, okay? Because I don't know exactly the cost of it, and that's what's gonna be something that we're gonna have to sit on and discuss. If we're gonna be doing the whole thing or we're gonna do half of it. But like I've said before, if anything we do, we have to do the court side of it first because that is priority right now. So I don't know if we should go into any discussion on this besides...
I'd just like to have the judge just go ahead and tell us if she's happy with what it looks like for the court.
Well...
Is she here? Is she here?
Yeah, she's a little bit...
As long as she's here, we might go here.
Well, yeah, but we're not discussing the design on it. We're just discussing the expenditure of the $36,000.
As long as she's, I looked at the design, I think it's been changed from what Richby was considering, but it's very, very nice.
Can I ask him a question?
Yes, go ahead.
What's his name?
Mr. Bueno.
Mr. Bueno, could you just highlight for me the, on your plans? I know you're probably getting to, but just highlight to me a concern that I have about the security of the courtroom. What ideas do you have on these plans for the security of the courtroom?
We have a corridor right on the front of the lobby that is gonna allow us to have security right in there. Is that for public? And also, we're gonna have a back door that is gonna allow to bring prisoners in a safety manner through the existing stairs that we got in there.
Are the existing stairs that you are alluding to, is that the stairs on the outside?
No. We plan on bringing the prisoners through the existing stairs inside, so that way they don't interact with the public at the front.
So how many people additionally will, okay, I got it. Can I talk to the judge now? Mayor, can I talk to the judge?
Yes, go ahead.
Get the judge. Oh, I'm sorry!
She's right there.
I was on the video, but this is better. I can stand here too, if that's fine. Do you want me to...
Yes. Yes, go ahead, Judge.
Just tell us how you feel, especially, I'm sure you've got the schematics. I don't know too much about court, but just tell me about my concern of security.
So, as I know, Mayor and Counselor, and thank you, it's wonderful to see you all tonight, and thank you for allowing me to appear. As I know, Mayor and Counselor is very aware, there are quite a few security and safety issues involved with the current courthouse that we have right now. And I know that we've spoken about this in the past. With the current design, it would alleviate all of those concerns. One of the major concerns that we currently have is the inability to actually screen persons prior to their entry into the courtroom, which is a huge security risk. Obviously, we have the windows that are facing the roadway that go directly into the courtroom. The court's exit door goes directly to the outside. We have actually had people come in through the exit door, which is another security risk. So there's, there's many, and it's concerning. This conceptual design is something that I worked very closely with the architect on, and it would remedy those issues. So if you look at the design, and if you see the right side of the picture, that's the side that actually faces Grand Avenue. So that's the side that faces the street. So persons would, at the base of that, if we left it as is, there's a glass door that can be locked to control who comes up and when. When you get to the top of the stairs or the elevator, there's the additional entry door into the courthouse, which actually provides space for security screening. And we currently actually have screening device that's in storage, which actually a walkthrough scanner. So that would allow for someone to be screened before they actually even enter the courthouse. Once they're in a courthouse, there's an entryway for the actual courtroom, and it's entirely separate courtroom. There's a lobby entry, obviously, and waiting area for the public, which we currently don't have now. And then our reception area actually faces the entire lobby, so whether security is present or not, we can actually see everything that's going on in that front area. So major, major improvement.
And the security for cameras and all of that, are you gonna have cameras in there and everything?
Yes. So what would happen is if Council in the future went forward with a plan, we would actually coordinate with the architect, or I guess it would be the builder at that time, and our recording equipment and our security cameras to have that all installed at the same time it's being built. So it would be wired in throughout the process so that we wouldn't have to knock down any walls or make any changes once it's in. But we would have cameras downstairs, in the stairwell, in the lobby, in the front area, all facing them. We'd have monitors where staff can actually view those cameras at all times.
And the prisoners that, that arrive, is there gonna be an enclosed area so that nobody could come up to them or anything?
The only challenge that we've been dealing with so far in the design, or just altogether, by being on the second floor, is how we would bring the prisoners in. We had originally, the, the design has been created to allow prisoners to enter through the back entry area and be brought up the stairs. However, as Council is probably aware, prisoners are always shackled, and that is a very narrow staircase, and so it could create its own safety concerns for the officers and the inmates. So it's very possible that they will be brought in through the front and the elevator, which is what's done in other cities. I believe Tucson City is the same way. So we would clear the area, have them brought up and brought into the courtroom, and then allow the public to come up.
Judge, do you see a lot of prisoners in person, or are you doing video initials?
So right now, especially with the pandemic, and this is something that I hope continues because I know it's, it's a good practice, but we do all initial appearances by video. We're doing every arraignment that we can by video, and the only time we're actually bringing prisoners over is for change of plea hearings, when they might have to enter into a plea agreement. We would also bring them over, of course, for trial.
No, I understand that, Judge, but that courtroom that we're building there, it's gonna be there for 20, 30 years. The pandemic is not gonna last 20 or 30 years.
Yes.
So I wanna know how comfortable you feel with the transport of prisoners to go up to the courthouse to make sure that nothing goes wrong? I'm just thinking, when I go to the county facility and they take prisoners, everything is enclosed, even on the outside.
It is.
So the people from the outside that might wanna talk to a prisoner, do something to an officer to get them, I wanna make sure that nothing can happen that will hurt the public.
And I'm, I'm comfortable with this design, and that's something we would do our best to ensure. The county does have the benefit of being actually physically attached to the jail. So when they built their building with the jail, they were actually able to route pathways from the jail into their courthouse building and then provide for elevator access to the holding cells. Because we are separate from the jail, no matter how we bring inmates over, they're gonna have to be transported in, in some way, either by jail staff or law enforcement. We do not have a holding cell currently in the jail, but we have included, if you look where it says floor plan, right above the F.L., you'll see a small area that has two doors, one that goes into the courtroom and one that appears to go into the hallway, kind of by the conference room. That area is gonna be keyed in in the event that we do need to hold persons in that area for brief times, but this design does not include an actual holding cell.
Well, I, the reason I'm going through this also is, when I was mayor, I had a terrible experience with the city jail because it was right underneath the mayor's office, and all of a sudden, the prisoners were escaping, wanting to get up through the mayor's office to get out. So I wanna make sure that, that's what we negotiated with Sheriff Fracamonte, for the county to take over our prisoners.
At the time, and I believe that, at the time, what currently happens is that NPD has assisted the sheriff's department in the transport of prisoners. When they do bring them over, it's one officer per inmate. Now, in the future, the hope and goal would be that it would return to the responsibility of the county and to the jail to provide those transports, but there would definitely have to be very serious and well-known protocols in place to make sure that those types of things didn't occur. Again, the prisoners are shackled. We'd have to have procedures for where they're gonna pull up, where they're gonna park, how we clear the public before they're brought in, how they're brought up. Again, unfortunately, I feel like liability-wise and safety-wise, the safest way to do that would be through the elevator, and the only elevator in this building is located at the front of the building. So we may have to come up with a procedure with law enforcement, maybe even a separate entryway through that back wall there where only law enforcement can enter. But either way, as it currently stands, the likelihood is that they would be brought up the front stairway, or the front elevator access.
Okay, Judge, I just wanted to make sure you were, the schematic you were, it meets your approval, and the security, you've analyzed it, and I have you on the record as to anything in case...
Yes, and I can, I can tell you that with, with what we have, and it's a great building, and obviously, as everyone knows, it's a clear floor at this time, but with what we have, we would do everything possible to make sure it's as safe and secure as possible.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Judge, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Nice seeing you, Judge.
Am I excused?
Yes.
Great, thank you, and it's great to see you too. Thank you.
Take care, Judge.
Mr. Mayor, any, any other questions for staff or...
No, no. Right now, the whole point is see if we got the vote for that money.
So, I'm assuming that you're voting on approving the conceptual design?
Yes.
And you're also voting for me to go ahead and make the budget adjustment for the amount not to exceed the $36,761 to move into phase two of our, of our design?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Mr. Kissinger? On the, on our bank account with Wells Fargo, can you take $36,000 out of there so you're not hurting the other parts of the budget? I know you're tight. I know you've got money there, but I'm just trying to predict as we move on, if things get tighter with our sales debt, we have money here, can you take the money, the $36,000 from this account to pay for that without impacting the budget for now? Maybe you can put it back later? Is that enough?
I believe so, and we'll also have Mrs. Walker on right after we're done with Mr. Bueno, and it'll be a great question to ask her if, how we could manage that $36,000.
You ask her.
And if there's a problem, I will definitely bring it back to Mayor and Council.
Okay.
Mayor and Counselor, I can answer that now, John, if you need to.
Go ahead, John.
Um, Mayor and Counselor, we have an appropriation in the contingency reserve that's funded by the cash accounts. So having the appropriation is what's important, and we should combine all of our cash accounts to make sure that we're in line with our budget. So the answer is yes, we have the appropriation in contingency reserve by your action. We will be able to move that, and that'll be part of what the Wells Fargo is to support the cash of the entire city for the budget. So we'll be fine.
That'll work. Okay, that's good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jack.
That'll help us if we don't impact on it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I was totally anticipating it coming out of contingency.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Any questions?
Call for the question.
All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Falls?
Mr. Bueno, we appreciate your, your participation in tonight's meeting, so that ends your, your portion, so I'm gonna go ahead and hang up with you now, and we'll be in contact with you quickly to move forward with this next phase.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Bueno.
Okay, shall we go to a financial report?
Yes, sir.
Yes, go ahead, Judge.
Pat, we're on financial report, and we've passed out our financial report from Mayor and Council, and I'll let Pat go through it with you. Looks very good.
Well, who was considering the situation?
Considering.
Mayor, members of the council, you have reported the October 2020 report, this is from July 1 through October 31 of 2020, and John's right. John and I went through it together, and it's, it's really positive news. I'm a finance person, so I'll never be totally optimistic about anything probably when it comes to finances, especially with COVID-19, but you can't deny the numbers that we're looking at this evening that are coming in and holding strong to our budget. Again, you know, we created a budget that was conservative, and Council did a great job of making sure that we stayed within our means and put in reserves, and that's why you're in the position you are. So with that, I'll just go through each one of the funds and talk a little bit about it. The first one is the general fund, and through October, you should be at 33.32% of the budget. I'm happy to report that the general fund is at about 32% of the budget. The tax revenues are about 33% of the budget. So you're less than 1% off from the target budget, which is great news considering COVID-19 and everything that's going on, and certainly the economy. You're holding your own on that, so that's the good news. On the expense side, you're also holding true to your, your budget on expenditures. Again, through October, you would be at 33.32%, and you're at 28%. So your revenues are exceeding your expenditures by about $603,000 from October. So that gives you a little bit of room there. Again, being a finance person, I'm gonna be cautious because we have to see what the rest of the year holds. There's so many uncertainties, but I'm hoping that, that Nogales weathers a storm. When we get to the HERF fund, that's a little bit different, we'll talk about that in a minute. The next table that we have, that we gave you, is Table B, which is the sales tax collected as of October 31st, and again, this is good news. If you look at what you collected for October of 2000 through October of 2019, July 1 through October, you are about $172,630 ahead of where you were last year. And so that brought down the amount year-to-date that you were less than 2019 by $392,289. Again, this is a good sign and a gauge to see where you're at on the comparison of the economy from last year to this year, but it's more importantly what you budgeted. And so that's why it's still good news that you're within the forecasted amounts that we gave for the budget to balance the budget in the general fund. The next page in the packet is attachment C, which is the departmental budgets. Again, they should be basically, if everything's in a perfect world, which it isn't, 33.32% of the budget. But as I've mentioned in other finance reports that I've given to Council, sometimes expenses are made in the beginning of the fiscal year, which skews the entire percentages for the year until they level out by the end of the year, and that's the case for PNC building inspections are almost right on, but they had the general plan update that they paid out at the beginning of the fiscal year, so it skewed it that they'll be fine by the end of the fiscal year. MIS had bought some, the contracts they had left at the beginning of the fiscal year, as well as some equipment purchases, so that makes it look like it's higher, that they're gonna exceed budget, but I think by the end of the fiscal year, again, Jose would, would contest this, that it went, it's gonna even out by the end of the year. The cemetery, again, we talked about that before, we probably can fine, fine-tune our estimates moving forward. It's about 45%, but I think it's mainly because of temporary personnel that we hired. But overall, if you're gonna be at 32.22%, you're at 20.77%, so that's a good sign in the general fund. When we go to HERF, I mean, it's a revenue fund, a little bit different, and we're at the low budget. Year-to-date, revenues are under budget by about $228,015, and compared to budget. And the primary reason for that is because of gas sales. If you recall, HERF revenues are based on a tax per gallon, a gasoline tax, to call it, it's not based on the price of gas. So if you sell less gallons of gas in the Nogales or in the county, which is a formula that's used for distribution, you are gonna see a decrease. And when I was talking to John about this, he mainly said that it was probably a result of people that came over from Mexico who bought gas in the Nogales and that aren't coming over right now. So that's why we're seeing that. I guess the good news is on the expenditure side, because you're still at 19% of expenditures. Again, if you were spending equally every month, you'd be at 33.32%. So you're still in good shape in the, in the HERF fund. The overweight fees fund, you have increased the revenues that you're taking in, you took in about, year-to-date, $51,356. Again, this isn't as good as it was in prior years because we know that was, the overweight fees were shut down because of the closure of the border, so therefore, they have started those fees back up again, and you're seeing some trickle in now. But the good news is you're not spending, you only spent 2% of your budget. So even though your revenues are down, your expenditure would be down too. Same with the expenditures on the HERF fund. The next is attachment for the D, for the sewer utility fund, and again, you're at 31% of revenues, so you're about right on track. There's, you know, a slight amount of difference, but again, it depends on, you know, election activity and how much you're taking in, but so far, you're, you're doing, you're about right on target on budget, and your expenditure side is about 24%. So again, you're in good shape of your revenues compared to your expenditures. The next is the water utility, and they're about 30%, so about 3% less than the target budget of the 33.32, and so, but if you look at the expenditure side, it's at 19% of the budget compared to 33.2. So again, there's no concerns, no worry on the, on the water, on the water side. The last one is the sanitation. You're at 32% of your revenues compared to the budget, and 21% of expenditures. So overall, I have to give kudos to all the departmental directors, John, everybody who's been watching, others figuring, figuring to what the budget is, and willing to be conservative, and again, kudos to the Council for going into this with that. We still have to get through November, December, January, and then we can take a really hard look at everything and say, okay, where are we at for the next six months, a year? Let's do a projection. We know what the first six months, the year did, let's do a projection out, and Council can make adjustments where necessary because we gave the flexibility and budget for it. The Council will be able to do that, and we'll do that in January. And with that, I'll turn it over and continue questions.
Do you want to have a congressman?
Thank you, Mayor. Under, this is questions for Mr. Kissinger. Mr. Kissinger, we, we've agreed here as a council, Mayor and Council, that I'm making reference to the water utility fund?
Yes, sir.
That we would hold off collecting, we wouldn't shut off anybody's. How are we doing with that? Are still people behind or...
That's a great question. Yeah, we do have people behind. My last figure was, do you remember, was it around 200,000, Pat, our last delinquent, new delinquent accounts on water?
I think that's the right...
I think it was around 200,000. I can tell you what steps I've taken. We went ahead and removed that language. went ahead and removed that language from the bill itself that says, if you can't pay your bill, you won't be turned off. So we're not outing it anymore. We're not putting that out on language. But we haven't started disconnects. That that's something that Mayor and Council might want to consider doing or not consider doing. As you can see, our our revenues are doing just slightly less than where they should be.
But if we had the two hundred thousand, we'd be ahead.
That's exactly. So it's just food for thought. Sometime in the future, we're going to have to start shutting off accounts that aren't getting paid. And we do have commercial and residential accounts that are past due. And and I'm talking new, not not old, since Mayor and Council approved not shutting off service account, we 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 have about two hundred thousand.
Just something for you to think of in the future, Mayor, to develop some kind of a policy so we don't get negative feedback, because these might be elderly people or or so.
Yes, I understand.
But we also need to worry about our revenues.
I understand. So it's not at a critical, if it was critical right now, I'd be asking you to cancel that, but it's it's gonna continue to grow.
Oh, yeah.
Just something to consider.
Right.
Vice Mayor, go ahead.
John, on on this delinquent accounts, how far back do they go? Do they go back a couple of months or six months?
We have delinquents accounts that go back years, Councilman, especially in the vibrant water, uh, uh, service area for sewer and those accounts, because we can't turn them off. But the water accounts that that we do have, the control of, these accounts just go back to, I I think it was March or April when we passed the policy not to turn them off.
And since March, since of this year, how how much of that two hundred thousand has accumulated? Like, maybe a?
About two hundred thousand is what they're showing as delinquent. It it was more and people started paying. But this, when I ran that report, it was probably a couple of weeks ago. I haven't run a new one since. I forget that information.
And are these customers put in a, like, on a payment plan or?
No, sir, because the Mayor and Council basically said, if you can't make payments, you know, make them when you can. We're not going to shut you off. So there's no incentive for them to come into a payment. That's what I'm thinking. We we might want to revisit that policy.
Yeah, that's.
Mayor, I had another.
Just go ahead.
Thank you. Ms. Walker, on on this expenditure, or Mr. Kissinger, on this expenditure that we're gonna be approving for three hundred and twelve thousand dollars for that sewer truck?
Yes.
How are we doing? Because I noticed that we're a little bit less on that. Where are we getting the money for that, on the sewer truck?
Um, on the sewer fund, you're doing fine. Again, you're talking about the sewer expenditure?
No, no, I'm talking about the, on our item, go ahead, John.
It's it's the the back truck. It's coming up on the agenda. We're purchasing a back truck out of our capital in the sewer fund. I think it's the one that's showing eight hundred and eleven thousand dollars, Pat, and we have zero expenditures on it. On, on, I think that's Table E.
Revenue are coming in, close but not dead on because of some of the delinquencies, but your expenditures are right now. So again, we appropriated for that, and you're within your budget. So you'll be fine with any amount of expenditure.
And Mr. Kissinger, also on the overweight fees here, did we ever get a resolution that we made a commitment of fifteen million dollars of our funds? But I I noticed that the schematics for the overpass have been changed dramatically.
Yes.
Have they ever written us a letter to say, hey, we don't need the fifteen million dollars? It's now ten million dollars or something so we can, has anything like that happened?
I think we came to an agreement to pay, what, was it fifteen million dollars?
No, our agreement was capped at four million, but it was also dedicated solely from fifty percent of our overweight fees. So if we don't collect that that amount of money, we're not gonna pay that amount of money. It's only from this fund.
So four million dollars?
I think it was, yeah.
Four million dollars?
Over, over.
Over ten years.
Over ten years. It's four hundred thousand a year for ten years, something like that.
Nothing of fifteen million.
I'm coming from memory here, but I think, John?
Well, so have I.
Yeah, I wish it was four, it was close to, because we've been averaging like eight hundred thousand, not a million that we were supposed to. But it was four hundred thousand, assuming four hundred thousand is right.
But it's only for, the good thing is it's only going to come from this fund.
No, I understand it, but if we find out that our commitment, let's say if it's four million dollars because of the redesign and the saving of money, that the four million dollars now becomes one million dollars, then we have more money available to us to fix the streets.
We haven't, my understanding, we haven't negotiated that, but I'm thinking the same way as you're thinking. If they do one eighty nine under budget, all partners have to save on that savings. We don't know. And that's a conversation we need to have with ADAC, saying if they do come under budget, does everybody get, pretty sure?
Yeah.
Discount.
The agreement was it would be fifty percent for ten years, no matter what that fifty percent was.
Right.
I mean, if if like right now where they cut it and we only had fifty thousand dollars, they only got fifty thousand dollars of twenty, fifty percent of twenty, fifty million dollars.
Can you send us something in writing on that, the contract, what it says?
Okay, yes.
I just wanna see.
Yeah.
It's more streets for us. That was the problem that some of us faced, not to do that because it's less street. Now, have some saves. That's more streets for your budget. That, so if you can bring some clarity of the amount and everything.
We can get that for.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
No, John. There's any other questions on the financials?
Any other questions for Pat?
No.
We're we're good on the money for the for the bank.
Yes.
Pat, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, number one, discussion, possible action, appointment of Vice Mayor. I placed this on the agenda. As you know, we talked about it last time about rotation.
Right.
And I just wanna say that, Vice Mayor, well, because you've done a great job. It was a tough year for you with COVID. It's been a tough year for all of us, but I wanna thank you for the work you did in the position as Vice Mayor. And and now it's time for us to decide. But this time, I'm gonna make the motion to appoint. And I wanna make a motion to appoint Councilwoman Stenmanis to be Vice Mayor.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, Mayor?
Yes.
Yes. No, I agree. We had Vice Mayor Madonado did an excellent job. Vice Mayor Behorth has did a superior job at both clubs, caring about our community. And I think you're next in line for it, and I think you'll do a good job.
Thank you. Yes, and I just wanna say something that I think you're gonna do a great job. You've done a great job with City Council. So now you're gonna have another title. And and I don't think you're gonna get away with it. You're gonna, you're gonna have to work. But I know you're gonna do it then. And and we're gonna have a great team next year, even though we're losing two good people that got furloughs and.
Pardons.
And pardons. But they'll survive. They'll survive. They're good, they're good men. They've done it, no? Wait a minute. No, go ahead.
No, 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 it's not. I was also gonna notice on the agenda, but I'll ask you when you finish this.
Okay, right. Yes, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I just wanna thank you, Mayor, and the rest of the City Council for giving me the trust in my effort. I enjoyed working as Vice Mayor. Unfortunately, you know, we couldn't get too many things done because of the COVID, but it was a real good experience. Thank you again.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. All right, so there was a motion, second. Okay, and now we're gonna vote on this. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All in aye. Opposed? The aye side. Thank you very much. Vice Mayor, your vice.
Vice Mayor, today.
Yes, go ahead.
Mayor, could I ask you, please, on, could we please take item five before we take item two?
I'd like to discuss item five before we say we're gonna shut down or we're not. I'd like to give Councilman Madonado a chance to present his proposal before we get into and just shut everything down.
Okay, where are we shutting down?
Well, on item number two, whether we maintain the city council's.
We would be shutting down the facilities.
Oh, oh, no.
Mr. Madonado an opportunity on item five to discuss that. Would you please?
Yeah, when you said shutting down, I said, why are we leaving? No, no, yes, let's do that. All right, now, we're gonna, we're gonna go to item number, item number five, discussion, direction and possible action, reopening of baseball parks and soccer parks for practice with limitations of ten people at one time. Councilman Madonado.
I went ahead and, Dr. Mayor, went ahead and put this back in the agenda, you know. It's been very tough for a lot of kids and teams having to go out. They're they're going out. They're playing in Saguaroita, Servista, Tucson, Phoenix. But they're they're not practicing. There's, we have maybe four or five indoor facilities here in town where they're doing their their practicing, but not doing any field practicing. Unfortunately, you know, I know the, we're going on a rise on our pandemics and all that. And, you know, makes it hard. But, you know, right now, we're basically, most of the teams that that wanna do, use the teams, use the fields and and have the the coaching. And they're doing all the protocols everywhere they go. They're wearing masks. There's a limitation of parents or guardians with each kids. They're not, they're not just neglecting the situation. Everywhere they go, they're using the the protocols of cer- so many fans per stadium or per team. In certain cases, there's only one parent per per player. All players have their their mask. There's no shaking hands. There's no sharing bats and stuff like that. You know, they're doing all all what they need. And I've been approached many, many times, you know, to be able to use our facilities, which is basically, you know, Memorial Park, Fletcher Fletcher Fields, and the thirty for the soccer guys, to be able to practice. And, you know, here I come back to you guys and trying to help, especially, you know, now that, you know, it's gonna, during the Christmas break, which actually ain't gonna feel like a Christmas break because they've been at home most of the time, but they're all looking to come out. They're all wanting to come out. You know, they're still doing it. Soccer teams are, there's three soccer teams that I that I know that have enlisted in leagues in Saguaroita. There's no, no, no fields to practice or pleasure. You know, in the future, I know as a as a city, we're gonna have to add a, add on a very, a very hard decision, which I don't know what what's gonna happen yet with Little League. You know, I know, hopefully, that tournament is in July, but hopefully, you know, we could say we're a lot better by then. But I'm expecting an email, a call from Willinsport or San Bernardino coming in December and in in January. Are we in with with hosting our tournament also, which is something separate from this. But right now, I'm being asked from the community, baseball players and soccer players, about reusing our fields just for practice. So.
You know, I I support you. And let me tell you one thing, if you do get that email from for hosting it, don't ever say no. Say yes. Because, you know, as a city and as a council, we support you a hundred percent on the on the regionals and all the all the work that Little League does. And 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 the event is a great event for our community. You can never say no because you don't know what's gonna change from here to then. Maybe all this thing after the vaccines come out and everything starts, you know, everything starts leveling out, things will get better, you know. And and one thing I'm gonna mention, members of the City Council, you know, I I I'm the type, I want, I want the whole state to open up, okay? Seriously, I want the whole state to open up. I read the paper, I read the International Today, where the, where they stopped football completely, no football games. All right?
Southern Arizona.
Yeah, I I read that, that they weren't aligned just because one or two students got COVID positive. And and then you read some positive commentaries and then you read some negative commentaries. We get numbers of nine hundred and one month, four deaths, and so many hospitalizations. And I understand, they're not children. They're adults. They're, you know, people like Mr. James Young age. And. Look at him. He doesn't wanna turn around. But we have to, we have to do something. We have to do something. But, you know, I don't wanna make a decision right now that later on I'm gonna regret. That's why I need every single one of you. I want your comments. I wanna see where you feel. Because this, whatever decision we make today, it's it's us doing it for the children. And I understand for for all the kids that wanna go out and play. It's sad to see those fields. Nobody in them. I've seen some people there, you know, walking around and maybe throwing a ball. I've seen some kids back here, you know, throwing a football and stuff like that, but not practicing as a team. You know, so so my concern is, is that we all to have, we need to keep this level. And and we were doing so fine. I mean, we were doing great. I just don't know what's been happening to us here in the county, that we're getting these numbers going, I mean, fifty, sixty a day and and hospitalizations. I don't know what happened. It was fine as soon as we started wearing, you know, face covers, the mask, and we started social distance. There's something out there in the city and the county and Santa Cruz that's causing these numbers to go up. What is it? Is it cross-border travel? Is it people gathering in big groups, no social visits? I don't know. Something's doing it. But I don't want it to to be, for us to give a decision to have people gathering, even though they're young, with their parents, and 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 having another increase in numbers. So, you know, I'm gonna let all of you make a decision and 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 say your comments and whatever comes out of that, Councilman, you know, we'll just go for it.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Mr. Madonado, on those kids that are going out of town and playing at Saguaroita and Tucson, on those tournaments, has anybody tested positive at those tournaments?
I've heard one team had one kid test positive, but there was a little question between the the coaches and 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 the parents. That was the week they returned to school. So they don't know if they cut it at school or they cut it at the tournament. But that's the only thing I've heard of. That, you know, other than that, they they've all been clean and clear. And they they're all get, they're all getting tested.
And I know Mr. Councilman Madonado has all the good intentions of helping the youth of the community start, you know, doing things, staying out of trouble and stuff like that. But is there any way that we can, if we go ahead and approve this, that we can do like a tryout, you know, for so many days or weeks and see what happens?
You know, my my thought was, you know, definitely no lights. That would limit the time timeframe, you know. They would all, you know, otherwise, I'm positive you would have teams asking for lights all the way at ten o'clock. But, you know, and everybody I've talked to, it's, you know, forget about lights, you know, they're all doing perfumes right now. So forget about lights, max ten, you know, split your squad, half go one one day, half go another. Uh, max ten, you know, split your squad, half go one, one day, half go another. Because we know that there's ma- m- most, most teams carry two to three coaches. There's gonna be two to three coaches, that, that leaves only seven or eight players at a time. But I've, I told them, you, you guys gotta work it out. You know, we're, there's no way we could flood the, the fields and have, you know, more, more than what we want, because then we'll create our own problems. And they all agree.
Who's gonna regulate this?
The coaches, the coaches are doing it.
Then you get people just show up because of my.
Basically, basically, in the past, Mayor, in the past, you know, everybody's gone to Parks and Rec and, 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 uh, sign in, uh, uh, we, you know, it's something we, we've done all the time. Um, normally, when, when Little League would kick in, Little League would take control of the fields and, and do the timeframes for practices, okay? X-team practices at this field, at that field, at this time and that time. But, you know, since right now we, we have no Little League, when Little League doesn't have them, Parks and Rec always, has always taken, uh, the lead in, in, uh, doing the scheduling for, for the fields. And so they would have to go, uh, to BB or Marcel at Parks and Rec, sign in, you know, time that they're gonna practice. Normally, we, we don't allow no more than two hours on a baseball and soccer. And they would go in and, and sign, and, uh, you know. Marcel, I think, has a, a sheet also already for basketball and all that, that they're using with, uh, you know, things that they can do, they can't do, and stuff like that, and, and they would schedule, uh, their practice days. You know, I'm, got no problem with doing it just during the week, excluding the, the weekends, just during the week, that way, basically, we're doing it more or less when everybody's in working time.
Is there anybody else, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, go ahead.
I just have a question. They're gonna practice within two teams, so each team five people, or how do you?
No, there, it's only one team per, per practice, per field, per practice. That way you, you don't get games going on, stuff like that.
So ten ti- ten people including?
Coaches.
Coaches.
Yes, ma'am.
So eight kids?
Normally, every team carries two or two to three coaches. So if they got five coaches, that's gonna limit them to five kids.
So it's up to them?
It's up to them, uh-huh.
Councilman, hold on. Yes, go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I'm kind of in a, in a position here because I've seen the impact of sometimes our decisions with, with students and how they're regressing academically, okay? And it's very bothersome to me because the kids are craving, I've never seen this, but craving, they wanna go back to school. Uh, and I also have a personal philosophy, like some of you, that government can't be all things to all people. And I finally come down to the conclusion that, uh, parents have to be a part of this. You see, I don't wear this mask because I'm mandated to wear a mask. I wear this mask because I listen to Dowd, Dr. Fauci, Anthony Fauci, and, and his scientific expertise on why I should wear this mask and why it protects me and it protects you. That's my decision. On this thing here, I have, uh, an eleven-year-old grandson and an eight-year-old granddaughter, and they both participate. The granddaughter participates in Tucson in soccer, limited, just like Councilman Maldonado has expressed. And my son played, my grandson plays, uh, in Tucson, uh, flight football. Lot of people, big parks, and they, he goes out there, and I've gone over there to see him plenty of times. Everybody's following the protocols there, they watch the kids real well. Uh, but I, I think it's a point in time that we should give an opportunity for some of these adults in the community that, that we, we shouldn't be take, telling them, uh, not here, but if you go to Saguarita and rent the field over there, it's fine, they do it there. And the kids don't go over there by themselves, they go in there with parental guidance over there. So I, I just feel that there's an opportunity that with proper guidance, and one thing that Councilman Maldonado failed to mention, is that we as a council have appropriated ten thousand dollars for safety protocols for the Little League and another ten thousand dollars for safety protocols for the soccer. Where they can buy ha- portable hand washing machines, mask, whatever that they need, that we've appropriate, to make sure that they're safe. Uh, I think it's an opportunity to, uh, them take care of their own guidance. I, I don't wanna look at this as the Parks and Recreation are going to have a responsibility to supervise. I don't think it's the role of Mr. Bajalier and the Parks and Recreation to be the police officers of this policy, okay? Uh, but I do think that if they want to take on this responsibility, follow those guidelines, and if the parent makes the decision, yes, I wanna send my son, or I wanna send my daughter, or I don't wanna send, that's the parent's decision to make. No different than it was a parent's decision to make between virtual learning, in-person learning, or a combination of hybrid learning. But I think it's the opportunity now to let them make a decision, give us, let them open up the parks under these guidelines and, and see what happens. We've given them financial resources to have safety protocols implemented. If you don't do those safety protocols, after we as a council, on behalf of the community, I've said, we are appropriating ten thousand dollars, then shame on you guys. You will be the ones to blame. But otherwise, I think that they should be given the opportunity. I don't wanna beat them, chasing them off to other communities down the block here. I didn't see any problems for my grandson playing in it, and I haven't seen him with my granddaughter. And the coaches, let me tell you, are very strict at all the places I have gone with the kids. With practices, they're limited, they're limited with their times, and nobody practices at night. They're all during the day. So, uh, Mayor, I, I, I'm supportive, uh, let's get, let's have parents make some decisions here. And the, the people that are in charge of these programs on a voluntary basis, let them, uh, look at the data that Mr. Kissinger sends and everything, and let's give them an opportunity to do it and make some decisions on it.
Councilman, I understand you were gonna say something.
Yeah, you know, I, I, I was a coach in the baseball, Big Blue Baseball several years back. But, uh, the good thing about baseball, it's not a, it's not a sport where people have to be next to you. I mean, you're playing catch, you're pitching, you're batting, you're, you're not next to people constantly there, where, where you have to really be careful. Obviously, the coaches will have to dictate exactly how close the people can be, how, how they're gonna be playing. But again, I, I agree, uh, you know, we're dealing with adults, we're dealing with people that have their children at risk, it's, it's their decision. And, and again, it's, it's, uh, baseball, like I said, throwing the ball, you can be, you know, twenty-five, thirty feet away from each other. You can be batting with a pitcher. The catcher is, is in back with you, but he's not up to you, right? He's firing back enough to you, or, and they're wearing masks. I, I think, I think it's time for the kids can go ahead, and they, you know, they're, they're wasting all this time when they could be playing. And I think it's a very big in their, in their growth. And, uh, I kind of agree, you know, that that's kind of time that let's let the people go ahead and make their own decisions. And, and I think that baseball is just the perfect sport where you don't have to be ne- right up next to each other. You know, I think it's time.
Councilman Diaz, you have anything, sir?
Well, I agree with, uh, my colleagues, uh, I have, I have a bunch of grandkids too. I have, uh, one grandson that, uh, he's six months away from graduating, and he's up in Tucson at school. Uh, he was gonna graduate in May, but he doesn't like the, uh, learning at home. So he went out and got a job, and when they go back to the classroom, he's gonna go back to school. So, so.
That's his decision to make.
He, he, he made his decision, my daughter made, said. So he's doing something productive because he doesn't like to, he has a computer. So he got a job, he got a job at Wendy's or, or someplace there flipping burgers or whatever, but he's doing something that he likes. And, uh, and he said he's gonna finish school, and once he finishes school, he wants to go into the Marine Corps. So he, he's got a plan. And, uh, with, with, with all this shutdown and, and everybody putting pressure on everybody to stay home, go go out, you're gonna get sick, you're gonna die, and blah, blah, blah. Uh, look at all of us, we've been taking care of each other here, and here we are since March. You know, everybody's fine, everybody's well, you know, we're all here, we're all together, we're social distancing, we're, we're in masks, we're, we're taking the precautions to, to, to stay safe. So the kids are, are, are the least, uh, uh, people to be worried about because they have a very good immune system and they snap out of it right away. Uh, today in the morning, I was watching the news, now the quarantines aren't gonna be fourteen days, they're gonna be from seven to ten days.
Right.
We got therapeutics coming onboard, we got the vaccines right around the corner. So, y- you know, I would say let the parents make the decision, if, 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 uh, if the parents are okay with it. You know, and, and we have people like, like George and the coaches that are gonna be there supervising and taking care of the kids and make sure they, they have the sanitation, uh, uh, products after to.
I wanna get out.
To take care of themselves and all that, you know, that, that would be a step in moving forward and moving in the right directions because the kids are, are just going crazy sitting at home. You need to go out and blow off some steam and energy and, uh.
I agree.
Give them a incentive to, to move forward and, and incentive to play, incentive to learn, and, and, and to be productive citizens here, so. And, and, and it's gonna, and it's gonna bring back a lot more benefit for, for them to be out there than to be locked up. It's gonna be a benefit to the citizens, to them, to us, to everybody, so. I, I think that would be a step in the right direction to.
Thank you, Councilman, thank you very much. Yes, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I ju- I just wanna add something, I, I agree with, with, uh, a fellow councilman. And the other thing, you know, even, even if we don't open up the parks, the, the numbers are continuing to go up anyway. It's not because of Little League, it's because, uh, the, the other people that don't follow the C D, C guidelines or they don't mask up. It's not the kids playing, it's, it's, uh, really the grown-up people that are not following the, the guidelines, so.
And that's why I was saying that, that, you know, to me, it's very important to open up the state. Because it's, it's not, it's not your everyday, every person that's going to a store and shopping, because everywhere I go, I see everybody with a mask on, everybody's social distancing. It's certain little things that are increasing those numbers. And, and honestly, I'm, the way I feel, it's, it's large gatherings.
The family gathering.
Gatherings, and probably a lot of them are families, we'll see what numbers we get after Thanksgiving. Let's see, because that's when we get the spikes, after every, every type of holiday or event or something that creates a gatherings of people. But it's not your everyday life. That's why it, to me, I think it's important that we, we start thinking about opening up the state and opening up the city. But my concerns were, like I said, Councilman, and I said last night to you. You know, it's those large gatherings, it's, to me, those are, I think that's where the connection is, uh, for increased numbers and, and cases. Go ahead, Councilman.
Uh, Mayor, well, you, you know how I feel, but I have a question for Mr. Massey. Just to make sure, Mr. Massey, that we don't put Mr. Kissinger or Mr. Bajalier in a, in a spot. As far as public policy is concerned, we're talking right now about Little League and soccer. Let's say I have a team of high school kids that wanna go practice baseball now that it's open. Is, when we make this motion, is it just for Little League certain age and soccer certain age? Or is this a public policy that's going to be for, that our facilities are open, but just follow these protocols? I just wanna make sure that we develop, our responsibility here is to develop a consistent and coherent public policy, that's what I wanna make sure that we do.
Mr. Mayor. Um, as I read the motion that is being made by Councilman Maldonado or under consideration, and as it's written up here, it says, you know, baseball parks, soccer parks, for practice with limitation of ten people at one time. Doesn't say, you know, Little League doesn't say, uh, any particular team, so if anybody wants to go out there and practice, keeping within ten people, I mean, that seems to be what the policy that's being under discussion here today. But I think what Mr. Maldonado is saying is that most, uh, of the anticipated users will be part of some sort of a league and will be relying on those coaches and the people involved in that league to make sure that they're following this.
Okay.
But anytime we see anybody out there that's more than ten, you know, we should be shutting that down.
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Mr. Kissinger, a question. Yes, go ahead. Mr. Kissinger, with listening to the comments that you've heard from us and, uh, uh, clarity that Mr. Massey has brought into the policy, public policy, do you have any concerns?
So, um, one thing I just wanna make some clarification.
Okay.
Of what I heard, and I'd like to get the rec staff to do, um, the activity of practicing baseball and soccer, if you have that consideration. You know, that's how the sport is concerned at this time. Uh, and only in those facilities, uh, baseball parks and soccer parks, only ten people per practice, practice only, uh, at any given time. No lights at all, and the activity can only occur Monday through Friday. That's exactly.
Correct.
No, yes, no games, it's just practice.
Agree.
Now, I, I, I deal with, there's just one of the practice game, I, I, you know, I'm not that familiar with either, uh, uh, baseball or soccer. How, how you practice soccer, sure, but I'm assuming that the coaches who will be responsible to enforce these types of rules, uh, will do.
Yes.
You know, basically, it's drills that they're gonna do, you know, infield in baseball, outfield, you know, batting, batting practice outside and stuff like that. Soccer, the same thing, you know, drills, you know, running with the ball, uh, you know, left and right, uh.
So I, 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 I can envision, Councilman, parent council, I can envision possibly city staff driving or visiting one of the facilities to look at some people engaged in soccer practice or baseball practice, and they will do a head count. If there's more than ten people there, they will take a look at action. Short of that, I don't think that our staff as well, they'll come in to know whether they're properly hand sanitizing, whether they're.
No, that's not hard, yeah, that's not.
Just ten people, doesn't appear to be a game going on, they're good, they don't, right?
And, and let me add, let me add one thing, uh, one thing that, you know, I don't think they need any fans or spectators, uh, at the practice, or it's ten people on the field. So, you know, uh, let me just make a comment on, on, on Mr. Barona's comment on, on the, on the money. Basically, you know, uh, as far as Little League, we're waiting for Willensport, San Bernardino, because we've, I've gone back and forth with Marcel and, uh, and, uh, and BB, you know, we're, we're waiting to see what we really, you know, need to do, let's say, in the dugouts, uh, what we're gonna need for the players. This last thing I wanna do is do one thing, and then they come at, at us and tell us, no, it's gotta be this way. You know, so we're, we're waiting for that, you know. I wish I, we could've said, hey, I need it, you know, I need to know by tomorrow, but, you know. They're the, in the same case, working from home up in, in Willensport, you know, and, uh, they haven't even given us, you know. Yeah, we know about this, having to have sanitation, uh, liquid and, and towels, uh, at concession stands, at the, at inside the dugouts and all that. But what about, you know, the spread of the kids? For us, you know, the, the one field where it's gonna be the hardest is Little League, because we got brick dugouts. You know, you, how can you stretch? You know, we thought about moving the, the fence of the dugout in, inside maybe three feet and, and give more rooms for the, the smaller kids and stuff like that. But we, again, we're, we haven't wanted to do anything, so we get everything, and we're, what I plan to do is send it to Willensport, make sure they approve it for their tournaments and everything, because we do tournaments in all fields. We do, you know, district tournaments, we do state tournaments, we do the regional in, in, uh, at Fletcher Fields. I want all fields to be approved, and Little League goes through an ASAP, which is a safety protocol, and we get. protocol, and we get approved, all our fields, every year. So, I wanna make sure, and I'm part of the safety committee, that we have all the dots and Ts and cross and everything before we spend a penny. That's that's what I'm, I wish, you know, again, that I could've had it last month, but that's what I'm waiting for.
Okay, alright. Okay, let's uh
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Possibly, if you don't mind, uh, before you take any action on this, maybe we should ask Marcel if he has any questions, if he's already heated.
Yes, okay, go ahead.
Marcel, uh
Yes, I'm
Are you there, Marcel?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. You 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 heard the 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 conversation here, Marcel, and uh I think they're ready to uh possibly move forward on making a vote on this, do you have any questions or concerns that you would like to address when the American Council is ready to take this action?
Well, I don't know if they wanna hear what I have to say, but
They're good there.
The only thing that has not been addressed would be uh uh when they would actually start using the facilities, uh, we weren't going to open in a in a COVID-free uh world, we were not gonna open up till, we're gonna open up till the fourteenth anyway, so if we can add that to the conditions of
Of December. Using that facility.
Fourteenth December, Marcel?
The fourteenth of December.
I got no problem with that.
Yeah, in the event that they would uh vote to move forward with this, um, that that's when they could start using those facilities.
Any any other concerns, Marcel?
Uh, just the enforcement and um I I just think that this is gonna be uh challenged.
Yeah, I I agree with you, but uh the councilmen here has said that him and his coaches will be doing the enforcement on this. So, I I think I think they address the concerns, Mr. Mayor.
And what
Could make make sure that the motion includes starting
After the fourteenth.
Yeah, and uh and I don't think we need, Marcel, I don't think we need to worry about concession stands or nothing like that.
No.
This is just for practice, ten people, no more than ten people, no games involved, this is just practice.
No spectators.
When when the season comes up and 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 we have uh we have uh different numbers, hopefully better numbers and stuff, we'll be coming back to the council to discuss if we're gonna be going out to full blown plane and and having spectators and having the beaches full of people, because that's that's a whole different different thing, okay? So.
It's understood, there's no no spectators.
Right, no spectators, no
Yes, correct.
Right.
Correct, correct, stay in the car.
Ten, that's it.
Ten total.
Okay.
Including coaches.
Alright, let's let's uh let's take a let's take a vote on this, let's do a roll call vote on this.
On this.
On Mayor.
Yes.
Just to make sure that there's clarity, Mr. Kissinger, please have this public policy in writing for us so that the public can understand.
Yeah, there's a minute.
Okay.
One one question that came to mind for Mr. Maldonado, uh, how are you gonna, are you gonna work out a schedule where one team plays one day and so on and so forth, so you don't have two or three teams showing up at the same time? You gonna work that out with somebody or?
In in the past, Mar- Marcel, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, when Little League didn't have control of the fields, which right now we don't, 'cause we're we're not functioning, uh, they've always done it with through Parks and Rec, and everybody's gone to Parks and Rec and and scheduled their their timing of practice, and so
Parks and Rec is gonna do the scheduling for the practice?
Uh, I, my, Marcel, uh, you guys good with that, uh, you know, which was the normal routine from the past?
Yes, that would work.
Yep. And and let me tell you, I need to get out of the house, oh my god, check it.
Gonna work. Whoa. He says he doesn't, he can't sell anything or that, or everything by phone. Alright, let's let's uh let's uh let's start with the Vice Mayor, roll call.
Aye.
Mr. Maldonado.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Mr. Barona.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, I will, aye.
Mrs. Lopez.
Aye.
Mr. Deuce.
Aye.
Mr. Guanfuzian.
Aye.
Thank you.
Do you not understand?
That was a very professional way of doing it, you know what, I'm gonna do it, I'm gonna do that from now on, I like that.
Thank you, and I think the committee will like it.
Okay, you uh, Councilman, take care of this, you'll do a good job, I know you will, alright?
Are you gonna go to, I I have some uh comments I wanna make on item number two.
Item number two, let's go to number two, okay. Discussion Direction Possible Action on City and Nogales Coronavirus COVID-19 Guidelines to Extend Closer to City Facilities.
Go ahead.
Mr. Kissinger's recommendation of the facility, excluding what we did in our number.
My recommendation is that we remain closed to the public, and we continue operations that we currently have to increase in COVID cases, and that we revisit this issue in the first amendment.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I support Mr. Kissinger's recommendation of of the the facilities and all of that, based on what he said and recommended, that I do support.
Okay, is there anybody else that has anything to say before we make a motion on this? No? You want the bill, you want everything closed in the city?
Yes.
I wanna continue.
That's a different item.
Just just for another month, right?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, and and city services aren't uh closed, you haven't closed
Yeah, they're not closed, they're just to the public.
The 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 general public.
Yes, yes, I understand. Alright, do we have a motion on this?
Can we just go ahead and just give that on the discussion?
Second.
That the the city facilities will remain closed as as they as they are right now?
Yes, yes, just like it says there on the motion. Okay, did I have a first, a second vote, yes?
Buildings.
First and second.
Okay.
Buildings, pardon.
Mayor?
Yes.
We need to do something, because this thing is getting on a handover here with Councilman Guanfuzian, he's eaten up all of the chocolates over there, and he's having a chocolate fit over there in the ship.
He's by himself, that's what happens when you put him so far away.
He's the only one who's eaten up all of the chocolates.
See, if he was up here on the dais, he wouldn't be there, doing that.
I'm trying to see that people are worried about my
He's too far. Alright, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes, the ayes, alright. Thank you, John. This next item I placed on the agenda, discussion and action to appoint the acting city manager. I know you're probably going, hmm, you know, thinking about it, and and 'cause there's no name attached to it, but I'm gonna tell you the name that I think should be, it's a city employee, and uh person's done a great job, not only as a lieutenant with the police department, but as an acting deputy city manager under Mr. Kissinger for about three or four months, I think it was, and this is, I'm a, I'm gonna make a motion to appoint acting city manager as Robert, Lieutenant Robert Thompson. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Second, alright, is there any discussion?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And this is only as as fast as we can hire a city manager, okay?
Oh, no, 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 I sure, and I'm not gonna be here, but the the only concern that I have, Mayor, is, it's not the individual, I have a concern on the process itself, because at the last meeting, I asked you if you would please call for a special meeting so we could all discuss this, so we don't come to this meeting and at the last minute find out who it is, and we we are all in a position that by the city charter, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Massey, we have to have a city manager in place to make decisions.
Right, this this motion needs to be acted on today.
No, that's what I mean, that's that's my whole point.
Yes, correct.
I didn't want us to be in this position, because in case there was people who weren't in agreement with it, then we're kinda forced into it, so the only thing is, is the process, Mayor, that I have a concern.
Yep.
I, the job that Lieutenant Thompson did as a deputy city manager, more so what Lieutenant has done as a lieutenant in the police department, I will tell you, he stands in the top one percent of work ethics, work knowledge, work experience, and how to treat the public, yes, okay? I I don't have any, but I just don't like to be placed in this position at the last minute, that's what I was trying to
You know, I felt that you were gonna say that, but you know, I didn't mean to do that, to place in that position. What I didn't wanna do is, first of all, the time, I couldn't get a s- a special meeting done just for that, and and unless we could, I would've had something else to come up with, to, I just didn't wanna do it for that one thing, uh, or have a study session to discuss it, because I knew that we had to place the person in this meeting, and it was so short uh uh in time in itself. And then I thought about it, I said, you know, almost every director that we have in the city probably is capable of 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 being an active city manager for three, four months or whatever it is while we select the city manager. They're highly qualified, uh, we have great people working in the city as directors, but this is the thing of what I thought about, if it wasn't because at the time that Mr. Kissinger asked me to select him and have him work with him in his office during that time as an acting, uh, I would've, it would've been a different thought about it, but every director, if you look at it, they have a job to do as directors, every, the chief has, the planning and zoning, everybody has their job, they have to take care of their departments. It's hard to pull somebody in that head position to come into something, but what I saw in the performance that Lieutenant Thompson did while he was in that office, and I saw it personally, 'cause I worked there day every day, and I saw him work, and I saw him conduct himself, uh, very professional with every director, with public works, with all the calls that the public was doing, giving, and the task that Mr. Kissinger was giving him, he was completing, I thought, you know, I said, well, this is a man that could probably, you know, take uh take the 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 opportunity to to, you know, be the acting uh city manager, and 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 I know very well that during that time, I didn't hear any complaints from anybody, you know, what he was doing in that office.
Oh, he didn't?
No, he did a great job, so I said, I don't see any problems, I think the members of the city council will accept him for the position, that's the reason I did what I did, but I understand, I understand the process, I understand you, you know, you know, that would've just extended it to another time or something that uh or study session, because the way I look at it, if I would've placed it in a study session, that means there would've been three or four different people we were gonna be selected from, then we would be discussing three or four different people. When when, right now, we need somebody that'll take us into the year and immediately, starting next week, start looking into how they're gonna, with human resources, we're gonna go through for the selection of a city manager starting next year. So, it's a different task and not new job that we have to do coming in the beginning of the year, members of the council, so that's the only reason I did it, the way I did it, Councilman, not 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 to jump over anybody.
Okay, well, I'd just like to feel a part of the process.
Yes, yes.
Now, the only concern that I have, and I hope that everybody will accept this, I'm gonna make a motion for an amend, to amend the main motion, is that uh that Mr. Kissinger is the only administrator that is directly responsible for all supervision of the Nogales Police Department, that the lieutenant has nothing to do with the Nogales Police Department, supervision of the director or any of the officers, it it goes directly to Mr. Kissinger, is that appropriate, Mr. Massey?
Well, I think uh with the consent of the acting city manager, and I don't think he would uh not consent, but I I think that, I'm just a little concerned because the charter does say that all administration is through the city manager, but I think, you know, I I don't expect that that would be uh, you know, a problem.
Do you understand the reasoning?
Oh, of course.
I I also, I thought about that too.
Okay.
I thought about it too, but but uh I I honestly think he's very professional about that, and I don't think he would conduct himself in any way.
Well, I just wanna make sure all the directors feel that there's, you know, and this way, it's clean cut, 'cause he doesn't have, 'cause eventually, he has to go back to becoming a lieutenant.
Yes, right.
And we don't wanna create frictions or anything.
And that's another thing, we, I I spoke to Mr. Massey about this, that there needs to be a letter also, the same way there was done with John, that as soon as he's done with the position
Right, there's no problem.
Immediately goes back to his original position as lieutenant with the police department without any problems.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with that, I just wanna make sure, and and I would still like to make that motion, even though Mr. Massey can handle it, that way that he gets the approval of the acting city manager and this and that, so that there's clarity among it, I I feel very strongly on that.
With the consent of the person who's making the motion, and we see the mayor who's consented, then that could be part of the motion.
So, who's second is it?
The two second, no, there's two, one, two.
Two, or?
We have three.
So, then it's a friendly amendment?
Is there a friendly amendment with the person who's second?
Yes.
Yes, okay, good.
So then, I would
That would be part of the motion.
Okay, and Mr. Massey, Mr. Kissinger, do you understand the the amendment that I offered? Okay, so then, thank you, thank you for doing that as a friendly.
Any more discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
If uh Mr. Thompson does a good job, which I know he will, would he be eligible to apply for the position in the future?
He doesn't have a bachelor's.
He'll have a bachelor's degree.
Yeah, even though he's shy of getting it, and he said he was gonna continue with his education, you know, uh, because actually his time, uh, he's, I think, if not, if I'm not mistaken, he's close to retiring from the P D.
Yeah, he is.
So, so
And he's close to getting that.
He his his uh, he told me that his, he wants to complete his education and hopefully uh become a a director with the city of Nogales or 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 higher position than the city of Nogales, but with the the bachelor's degree that he needs for
The reason I ask that, because uh, you know, since the beginning, I've been pushing to to hire somebody local, somebody that knows the community, that knows the the culture, knows everything about the city.
Yes.
And and, you know, he would be great.
And the word, you know, the thing about it, he's sitting right there, he's the best man for the job, and he's done such a great job, you know, John, you know, that John can do the best thing, whatever, for for the position, the city manager.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask Mr. Massey a question? Mr. Massey, Mr. uh, the mayor was making reference to the letter that of agreement of employment as we do with Mr. Kissinger, but that has to have formal approval by the mayor and council.
That that was formally approved, and uh, but I I think we could also make it part of this motion, even though there's nothing in writing.
Then I'd like to offer another friendly amendment.
Okay.
Do you would agree to, is that appropriate, Mr. Massey?
That, I think that's appropriate.
I think we would do.
Only, what would it be, it would be wording to the effect that when he um agrees to take the position, on the condition that when his time as acting city manager expires, however long that would be, he goes back and resume resumes his merit-protected position as lieutenant with the Nogales Police Department.
Well, it isn't, it it could happen even before that, if there was a conflict between four of us and
Oh, yeah.
And we could tell, so that
Whenever he goes back, whatever, but maximum would be six months.
Mr. Massey, uh, what would be his salary?
That's another question that you guys, that I'm sorry, that the council can consider.
Well, Mr. Mayor, you made the motion, what, did you have something in mind for salary?
I I
Or just bring him up here at the same salary?
No, not really, you can't do that, it's not fair, but I don't think, I think his salary should be comparable to Mr. uh Kissinger's salary.
Yeah. Would you add that on to my amendment, Mr. Massey?
I certainly will do that.
Okay, fair enough?
Fair enough, thank you very much.
Okay, offer, did it, did everybody made the motion in the second, did they agree to write?
You agree?
The second, second.
Alright.
And this would be effective tomorrow morning.
It'd be effective tomorrow.
I think basically, the salary should be, you know, I think Mr. Kissinger has had more knowledge in this situation, so I mean, his base scale, I think, is higher than 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 maybe uh that Mr. Thompson should be, simply because he's going in there for the first time, so I don't know if, you know, I don't know what you mean by
No, well, the times that John has had the position as acting city manager, he's gone to the the salary of acting of city manager.
Yeah, right, he had
But what I'm saying is that Mr. Thompson doesn't need to go that high, he he can go to the deputy city manager salary.
Right, okay.
That's what I'm saying.
That's that's that's
Understand, it's okay, it's agreeable?
Yeah.
And everybody agreed with the amendment?
So, our
If we offer, you know, Mr. Massey, to make sure there's clarity for you to draw there.
Right, and I would make one procedural uh request, Mayor, if we could have a quick adjournment so that we can call him and make sure that he's agreeable to all these terms, and if he's not, we need to come back and
Right.
Do this all again, because this has to be done tonight.
But that's the, see, Mayor, that
That's the, see, that's the process that I didn't want to give you. So that's adjourned, so.
Very quickly, just get him on the phone.
He would be taking over January 1st?
No, tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow.
Oh, yes.
And we have to by the city charter.
Letty, could you call him, find out? John, could you call? Do you have his number, John?
I think I do.
I think if I made a break.
Yes, go ahead. Yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, members of the council.
Dalem Chocolat.
See, the mentitos están muy buenas para la gran.
Robert?
Resets. Yes.
Are you listening to the radio? Okay. Are you listening to the radio?
Oh.
Okay.
Okay, Robert, you heard everything. Everything good for you?
If you don't, I'll just turn off the light.
Good with everything, Mayor?
Good.
Okay, we're all good. Thank you, Robert.
Okay, so, the break is over. Do we need to take a break? That was a quick break.
He says, yes.
Is he at home, John?
No, he's watching.
I did not.
Oh, but he's watching it?
Yeah.
He was watching the meeting?
Watching, I did not.
Okay, he's probably at home. He's a hard worker, good man. All right, then, let's call for the question, ladies.
The right side.
Yes. Okay, wait a minute. Wait a minute, Letty's got, Letty's got. Say one, Letty.
Okay.
All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Thank you very much, members of the council. Good decision.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to be an acting city manager for the last.
For being.
Thank you for being.
John, you know.
The last two years.
I'm gonna tell you, if it was for me, boy, you'd be there, but I tried, Mr. Massey wouldn't allow me.
I know you did, Mr. Mayor, but I still wanted to thank all of you for giving me that opportunity and
And all the ti-
I'm ready to continue serving you as your.
And all the times that you've done it in the past, John, you've done a great job and and I'm so happy to be working with you here, John.
For you, sir?
Me too.
I know you do.
Okay, number five, orders. Consideration possible action of order 2020-12-069, an order of the council of the city of Nogales, Arizona, adopting an amendment to the city personnel manual, chapter 11, discrimination and harassment.
So, Mayor?
Thank you. Mr. Massey, discussion.
Yes, Mayor, thank you very much. I passed out a single page. Basically, this is the corrected version of what's in your pack of materials. I had left off item number five, which is almost at the bottom there, it's the last highlighted sentence. And I'll just read it into the record. The human resources director or designee shall attend all interviews of employees conducted as part of a formal investigation or shall cause the interview to be recorded by use of audio or video technology. And again, that is part of this amendment, which formalizes a little bit more, clarifies and gives more detail the process for how to conduct these types of investigations. Again, this is based on lessons learned. Also, on number E above that, number five, is we put in there that, no, that was, I'm sorry, it's number B, that it makes a reference to the city's ordinance as far as how confidential employee is to be defined. And both confidential employees and city council members are excluded from the universe of people who can be observers at investigations.
It, Mr. Massey, is the term in its particular city council, is that inclusive or independent of the office of mayor?
Oh, it's inclusive. A member of the city council, the mayor is the presiding member of the city council. So, Mayor, you don't want to be an observer at these.
No.
Okay.
Just, okay.
Just going ten years, we might have a mayor, so that doesn't include me.
Right.
And hops in just to make sure. Mayor, I just want to make a comment on this thing here, that Mr. Massey, Lady Justice is blindfolded. And Lady Justice has the scales that are balanced. And Lady Justice doesn't just preside or look over in a court of law. It should be like that as we, any public entity, develops public policy, to make sure, especially to our employees, that they feel that there is equal, blindfolded, balanced scales of treatment toward them. You've done a wonderful job in this, but I still want to recall to you, Mr. Massey, that you are the chief law enforcement officer of our community. Not the police chief, nobody but you. And it is imperative that public policy be scrutinized to make sure that there's fairness and that any state, local or federal laws apply in all of these situations. And sometimes, I think my biggest disappointment was my first year on this council, when they brought a thick stack of changes to the personnel manual. I think gave us time to review, but I wanted to discuss it out in the open and all of a sudden, everybody wanted to go home. The purpose of discussing these things out in the public is to make sure, not only that our employees know, but that the public knows what the policies are.
Right.
So, this was very well done and I think there's a balance of justice here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I can make a comment at first, I agree 100% with what Councilman Verona said. Secondly, is we do have two amendments to the personnel manual pending. And I understand Dr. Verona's frustration that we didn't have a pull-apart session where you could really get into it. But these amendments that we're making tonight are based on lessons learned. And I think this, to my point of view, HR manual is a living document. And so, we've made a couple of different amendments this year. And after the actions tonight by the city council, assuming that the, obviously, these amendments and other amendments that have been recently adopted, we're going to be doing a reprinting of the HR manual and we will be providing each employee with a new copy. So, it's because we've done a couple of different amendments. And now, it's time to basically recodify, collect everything and get it back out there. But that doesn't mean we're stopping. I mean, it's just, every time we have something that comes up, we, you know, look at the HR manual and we test it out. And if it's silent on an issue where it needs to speak, or if there's something that's not clear, I'm not gonna be bashful bringing back amendments just because this is your document. This is your opportunity to tell staff, tell management, how you want your employees to be treated. And I think that's a very concise description by Councilman Verona, that everything needs to be done fairly and transparently. And obviously, that's, I think, embedded in this amendment, but it's also, I think, throughout the manual.
Anything else?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ayes have it. Number two, consideration possible action of order 2020-20070, an order of the council of the city of Nogales, Arizona, canvassing and declaring the results of the municipal general election held on November 3rd, 2020.
Second.
Discussion, Mayor?
Yes. I just want to make a comment. Sometimes I've learned here in the past couple, the last 30 days, that these have become, throughout our country, routine matters until recent. But I do want the public to know that I strongly feel, and I get around a lot, that all of our elections in Santa Cruz County and in the state of Arizona were fair and free and transparent. Even though some would disagree. But I honestly, and I want to say this in public, that I feel very much so, that there was no fraud going on, no manipulation of ballots or anything of that manner. And I give you as the prime example, the largest county in the state of Arizona is Maricopa County. A former student of mine is the Maricopa County Recorder, who was responsible for all of the elections in Maricopa County. He lost the election by about 4,000 votes. When I first saw the results, he was ahead by 50, 75,000 votes. And as the night went on, it dwindled really. If there was such manipulations and frauding going on, he probably would have won the election.
Yeah.
But I feel so adamant that anybody would question our democracy in that manner. I feel so much, and if you ever take a walk, where I've learned the most of the value of our democracy is, one day, if you're fortunate enough to walk by yourself at Arlington National Cemetery, you will understand what democracy is and how anybody could believe that anybody in this country would do anything like that. I cannot understand. I think that that's just complete ignorance. And if you ever get the opportunity to make that walk, you should do it. And that will give you the biggest understanding of the sacrifice there is so that we have the privilege to go walk. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Go ahead.
Councilor Verona, you don't have to go that far. We have a lot of that here.
Yes, I know, yeah.
Over 600 right here.
You're right.
It's the cemetery.
Yeah. What I was gonna say, just walk through the Griner in San Diego at boot camp and they'll tell you what democracy is. All right. Hearing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it. Number three, consideration possible action on order 2020-12-071, an order of the council of the city of Nogales, Arizona, authorizing Public Works to purchase one international sewer pumper truck for the sewer department for the amount of $391,256.35. Second, discussion. Just go ahead.
Quick question, our old, our old truck, is that being put out of service or do we need another truck or what?
For what I understand, the oldest one we have is better than the new one that we have.
It's gonna be put out of service, right?
I think it is gonna be put out of service or it's gonna either be used for parts for the older one. But we actually have two, one smaller, one big one. But the oldest one, I understand, is pumping a lot better than the one we have, so. And the newest one we have, I think it was purchased, Jesus Christ, in 2002, 2003 or something like that. Been a while. So it's, it's done its job.
So I think maybe in the future, we should, we should start considering selling out that surplus and getting rid of all that stuff we do.
I think, I think they, if it's put on the heap.
The two chassis we bought, we just auctioned off the two old chassis, so we do.
Yeah.
As they become available, we auction them off.
Yeah.
I just signed off on the two titles.
Perfect. Okay, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it. And Pat said we're good with that money, huh, John? She said it earlier.
Yes, sir, that was included in our capital budget. If you saw it in there, it was on the 180.
All right, thank you, John.
Yes, sir.
Number four, consideration possible action of order 2020-12-072, an order of the council of the city of Nogales, Arizona, approving a memorandum of understanding with state of Arizona and local governments regarding one Arizona opioid settlement. Second. Discussion, Mr. Massey?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I got a copy of this settlement, including, you know, copies of signatures of the representatives of all the counties and many other cities in Arizona that had already had an opportunity to approve it. And of course, you read the cover letter that says, we have to get this back to the Attorney General by December 15. So, this is literally a take it or leave it offer. And if we get on the settlement train tonight, what it is, is we get the opportunity to have a very little bit of a class action settlements that are in the process of being negotiated right now. Of course, this relates to the opioid epidemic and several very high-power lawsuits are pending against the opioid manufacturers. And if the settlements do come forward from the manufacturers and this becomes effective, we'll get a little bit of money, including, there's an incentive here that the counties that get all of their constituent towns and cities within their borders to sign on, they get, their percentage goes up a tad. So of course, Santa Cruz County is requesting us to approve this. And any funds we receive are restricted to abating the negative effects of the opioid epidemic. We can expend it on treatment and getting help to the people who need it, but we can also use it for first responders as, to make sure that they have the equipment necessary to be as effective as possible. So, that's it in a nutshell, Mayor. It's an opportunity to get a little bit of money. We could opt out of it, in which case, if we were to want to get any money, that means that we would have to hire an attorney. We'd have to be a party to these, you know, pending litigation. So this is the way to get on board the pending litigations that are already in place. And of course, like with any settlement agreement, Mayor, first off the top goes to the attorneys. So just, by the way, so we are gonna be, you know, part of paying the attorney fees and then after that, then everything starts getting split up.
Okay. Go ahead.
Mayor, just a personal comment here on what Mr. Massey said here. We're gonna get some money, but it's still so shameful, so unpredictable, that so many young lives were lost just to make money. And that doctors were involved.
Incentivized.
Yeah, incentivized, that's the, and it's just, you know, I read about this, I've seen it, I have personally felt it. When family members get addicted to drugs, Mayor, it's not purty, it's awful. And sometimes you don't know how to grab it and control it. And I know we get some money, but I've read of all these young lives that were lost because of this addiction that was uncalled for just because this pharmaceutical family, all their concern was to make money. It's just, I understand what you're doing and I'm glad what you're doing, Mr. Massey, but it's very hard for me to comprehend how we got to this place like this and it wasn't stop working. It's just very, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Anything else? Call for the question, okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ayes have it. Number five, consideration possible action of order 2020-12-073, an order of the council of the city of Nogales, Arizona, adopting an amendment to the city personnel manual, chapter 15, employee privacy rights and searches. Discussion, Mr. Massey?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Again, this is an amendment to the HR manual and what this really does is like, similar to what I did, asked council to do before, to incorporate the meet and confer ordinance into a specific place in the city code, so it now gets published and people have access to it. This is, for the most part, a pre-existing standalone vehicle accident policy. And now, I'm bringing it to city council so we can incorporate it as part of chapter 15. And chapter 15 is a very small chapter. And chapter fifteen is a very small chapter right now, it only has fifteen point oh one and fifteen point oh two, so this is fifteen point oh three. Uh, it, it kind of relates to the subject matter of that chapter, though, as far as employee privacy rights and the use of property. And so I'm asking that if council, uh, is amenable to it, that the order states that the chapter title is modified slightly to use of property, privacy rights, and vehicle accident prevention, and then that this policy, which is presented to you, becomes part of that chapter as fifteen point oh three.
Okay.
Is this a whole new policy?
It's not, as I mentioned, it's a...
Or what did you change?
Essentially a pre-existing policy that was, uh, signed and adopted. I think the last time anyone, uh, signed it was Dr. Felix, but he signed it pursuant to authorization by council, so that's why we're bringing it back to council. And there, I did make some slight edits to it. I, I don't think I intended to make anything very substantive, but trying to make it a little bit more, uh, user-friendly and so that when we need to go to looking for how to do an accident investigation properly, and then especially as to what possible employee consequences may arise, again with the idea that if there are going to be consequences, and every policy does say that, that employees need to be careful, if it looks like you're not careful, you can have disciplinary consequences, well, obviously that needs to be presented to them and in a, in a very accessible manner. And so again, that's the idea of putting it into the, uh, HR manual, which everyone is going to be getting, uh, in January.
And I, I think to do it is appropriate, because we have some problems with remembering the big problem of the garbage truck, that the arm stayed out, and we didn't know if it was a malfunction and we wanted to investigate it. So I think he brings, uh, more clarity to the policy so that there's more accountability. I support it, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, anymore? Any questions? Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? You guys have it. Number six ordinances. Number one, consideration possible action ordinance oh, oh, two zero, two zero dash twelve dash zero seven, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Nogales, Arizona, amending Nogales City Code, chapter thirteen, offenses and miscellaneous provisions by adopting a new article two relating to the regulations of recreational marijuana and setting forth violations, enforcement, and penalties, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severity... Severability. And establishing an effective date. Second. Is there a second? Second. Okay. Discussion. Go ahead.
Uh, Mayor, before...
Go ahead.
Can I just make another quick handout? I forget for a correction on this. Uh, again, on section thirteen dash twenty-five. The correction is to subsection C, to make it clear that, uh, it's referencing, um, section one dash nine instead of one dash seven of the code. So, uh, uh, housekeeping there to, uh, correct a mistake that I put into there as, as I was drafting this.
Mayor, I don't think I need to go ahead and repeat everything I said during the study session, okay? But, um, to capture and capitalize, uh, my points is that I do support this. I think it's important for us, especially being a border community, that we, we were kind, we were very consistent with our medical marijuana position, and I think I need to remain consistent with this particular policy. I understand that it did pass through the state of Arizona, but it also gave us that leeway in the law itself, correct, Mr. Massey, to do what we're doing?
Correct. The, uh, law that was, uh, passed by the voters explicitly allows cities and towns and counties to take the actions that are presented in this ordinance tonight.
And I think that we should stay, uh, uh, ahead. I like that we're progressive on this deal and that you brought this to our attention right away, Mr. Massey. So I just support it, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Is there any more discussion than this? Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Mr. Massey, uh, this, uh, provisions also, are they similar to the alcohol?
To the...
To the alcohol, uh, ordinance?
Um, you know...
Anything about drinking in public?
Well, yeah. All that applies to this is, uh, one ordinance.
Well, thi- this is ki- is a standalone ordinance, and we're putting it into the, um, health and sanitation, which w-... Oh, no, I'm sorry, literally I'm getting confused here. Uh, oh, yeah, offenses and miscellaneous, but I'm not sure what ordinance on alcohol. Uh, uh, you might be referring to, let me see, chapter thirteen. So there's a, just a variety of different, uh, offenses that are listed in, um, chapter thirteen. But, uh, I don't think there's anything relating to alcohol in, uh, right now. Alcohol, of course, is heavily regulated by state law. So I don't think we have too much of our own local regulations to, with respect to alcohol. But the second ordinance that is in front of you later off, after this, is, is the smoking in public. So this is, does, does become a little bit more parallel to the smoking in public.
The reason I ask is because, you know, there, there's enforcement on alcohol, too. You can't carry an open container and...
Right.
...or, or selling alcohol without a license.
Right.
And, and the, the same rules apply to, to, to this, uh, to this one ordinance, right?
It's very similar. I think, though, the, 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 um, regulations, I think, that you mentioned, um, I believe that's coming from state law. Uh, obviously, the, um, recreational marijuana, that was, uh, proposition that was passed does create a whole new chapter in title thirty-six, and it does create a bunch of new state laws. And so, yes, we will be enforcing those state laws as well, but this does, uh, but it does have a carve-out for, um, city action as far as prohibiting, for example, the major prohibition in this ordinance is prohibiting marijuana establishments. And so we don't have the ability under state law to prohibit, um, bars that get, uh, for the sale of, you know, retail sale of, of liquor, that if they get the proper liquor licenses from the state. So it's, it's similar in some respects, but it's, it's, it's own animal, I think, in most ca- most situations.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, any more discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
And, I've got my hand up there, I got, thank you. Since, since I heard that it was unanimous, can we also make a motion then to, uh, waive the second reading? And so it will be effective as of the effective date of the ordinance, which is thirty days from today.
Okay. Motion on waiving the second reading?
Yeah, I think I move.
Vote on that?
Yes. Vote on that, Mayor, yes.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? You guys have it. Are you eating enough chocolate? Thank you, Mayor.
They're kicking in back there.
It's kicking in, huh?
The sugars are kicking in.
Okay, number two. Number two, consideration possible action of ordinance oh, twenty twenty dash twelve dash zero zero eight, an ordinance amending Nogales City Call, City Code, chapter ten point five, health and sanitation, article two, smoking in public places, prohibiting smoking in city parks penalty. Second. Second. The reason I asked Mr. Massey to put this, members of the council, on the agenda, even though we have something from the past that's basically, this is gonna piggyback on, is that I think I mentioned it to you on the last meeting, that I had a presentation, uh, brought to me by some students from the Mariposa Youth Coalition and, uh, and some other representatives. And, and they were concerned about, about, uh, seeing people smoking in our city parks and, and disposing of the cigarette butts in the park and, and around children and second-hand smoke and everything, and they were asking me if there was something that we could do by, by enforcing it in our city parks and also by displaying some signage that, uh, that would identify no smoking of cigarettes in our, in our parks. So I talked to Mr. Massey, Mr. Massey said that there was no problem, so, Mr. Massey, is there something you wanna say about this?
No, Mayor, um, just so that maybe council knows, I did put the salient provision of ten point five dash twenty-one that's being amended here, but then it shows asterisk, which means I'm, um, not setting forth, uh, some section. So what it is, is this is the prohibition, um, section of an ordinance that I think was adopted back in two thousand and two, Mayor, uh, Lopez, when the, um, state first, uh, came up with, um, health regulations prohibiting, um, smoking in public. And so it just said, and, and what, what I'm, um, not setting forth, and, and, well, what those asterisks means is, uh, there's like fourteen specific locations where smoking is specifically not to be, uh, allowed. But instead of making this like number fifteen, I just put it in there in the introductory sentence so that it reads, except as otherwise set forth in this article, smoking shall be prohibited in all public places. And then, um, the capital is parks, so that's just the one word. That's the one addition there is parks, because parks do not fall within the definition of public places. So all public places, parks and sporting arenas within the city, including but not limited to the following. So all kinds of different public places are listed there, but parks are being called out in particular at that introductory, just, but I think it, we get to the right, uh, place. And then I set forth the penalty provision that's already in, uh, this chapter of the city code so that when this ordinance gets published in the newspaper, people will have the fines set forth to them. So again, the idea is people have the right to get notice about penalties, and so that's what that is all about.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, what is the penalty? What is, what's section one nine of this code? What, what is the penalty?
Oh, no, that was section one dash nine, that was from the previous ordinance on the marijuana. And so that one dash nine is the general penalty provision of, of the city code, and that's a class one misdemeanor. But, uh, the penalty provision here on section two is the penalty provision from this particular, uh, body of, or, of sections that are, that were adopted in two thousand and two and consolidated as article two, smoking in public places. And that has ten dash five dash, or ten point five dash thirty-three. So in this article, we don't default to the general penalty provision of the code, which is a class one misdemeanor. Instead, this creates its own penalty, uh, regime, and that's what it says, is that it shall be unlawful and a civil infraction to smoke. So this is what we're saying, uh, by the, uh, so that if anybody violates this, it's gonna be a civil infraction, and it's a one hundred dollar fine for the first offense, two hundred dollar fine for the second offense, and three hundred dollar fine for the third offense, and then after that, it could be cited as a class one misdemeanor.
Is there, is there anything on the warning there for, for the first offense, or is it...
No, we, we, we could do some train- we could do some training on that.
You gotta do is read it. Get some more chocolate, right there. Repeat and everything that's on it.
Yeah, read it.
Nubar, please.
Okay, all right. That's, that's okay, all right. Uh, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? I just wanna thank the Mariposa Youth Coalition. Wait, uh, yes, I just wanna, I know you were gonna go with the second. Yes. I just want to thank the Mariposa Youth Coalition for bringing this to my office and not only the, the students, but the group there and, and their representatives. Great job. Now, uh, we need to, uh, the second reading. You have a motion?
To amend the second reading?
No, to waive the second reading.
To waive the second reading, yes.
That's a motion.
Yes.
Second?
And a second.
Okay. Nubar, you made the motion?
He made the motion.
I made it.
Nubar made the second?
Nubar made it. More candy left.
On his last one. His last motion. That's his last one, Nubar. Yay! Good one.
I think I oughta make the motion.
I think so.
I, I think yes, we should.
I did.
You know, that guy, no. All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Yes, aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Members of the council, thank you very much, it was a great meeting. Now we have mayor and council reports on current events. What do I have? Vice Mayor, what do you have?
I don't have any, anything to report, but, uh, I just wanna take this opportunity to, uh, thank, uh, Councilman Henecian and Councilman Valuna for their services to the city. And, you know, uh, I'm glad that I got to, to, uh, serve with them for two years. I've learned a lot, you know, it's been a, a, a good experience. And, uh, they've, you know, they've showed, uh, showed me a lot of, a lot of good things on how to, on how to really, uh, make decisions and, and, uh, make opinions on, on different, uh, uh, things that come up to the council. And, and I just wanna thank them for their service, and I wish them the best in their future endeavors.
Thank you very much. Are you, uh, are you gonna run, re- run for re- and then run for office, Nubar, again?
Am I gonna what?
Are you gonna run for office like Trump?
I, I, I truly hope that the, that President Trump stays in office.
Oh.
Oh. But he's, he's...
You're grieving.
If Marona slaply said, if all the, of all the voters were legal and legit, then, uh, you know, I think he will stay in office, but, but again, we'll find out, we'll, we'll find out.
No, that's, that's... Councilman, do you have anything?
Uh, no. Uh, same as Mr. Bajorkis, I'd like to thank both, uh, colleagues, you know, served for the last four years. Mr. Varona, uh, thank you for everything, very educated, uh, four years, uh. Mr. Henecian, the same thing, uh, you know, you, you both gentlemen are, are really, uh, great representation of what this community is about. Uh, thank you for your hard work and, uh, and we'll miss you. Apiztamos.
Good job. Cons- Vice Mayor?
Well, uh, I, I have to say the same thing, and I already told you in my part. Uh, it was a pleasure working with both of you. And I wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. It's about the time to do it.
Councilman Diaz?
Well, I wanna echo all the, uh, all the nice words that were said about Councilman Varona, Councilman Henecian, from all the colleagues. And I agree one hundred percent, it's, uh, it's been a great run, it's, it's been a, a great experience for me to work with both you guys, and I know we'll still be working together in the future. So I'm looking forward to the future and as being part of both of you guys and working together, still troubleshooting and solving problems for making the city of Nogales a better place to live in. So I wanna thank both you guys for a wonderful experience that I've had personally by knowing, knowing you and, and learning from you guys. It's been a great learning experience for, uh, for myself. I, I told Councilman Varona that four years ago, someone like that, that, you know, I learned a lot and I, and I like his leadership style and the way he questions everything and makes a one-hour meeting a three-hour meeting, that's, that's a lot of fun.
That's not true. No, it's a five-hour meeting. It's a five-hour meeting.
And we're still in current deals here. I'd like to thank the mayor's office for the banner, Mr. Disner, the banner in front of the city hall, thanking the veterans and lighting up red, white, and blue on the city hall building. I want to thank you very much for all the help that the veteran community got for the banner and we did the sculpture there. I'm sure everybody enjoyed it. So hopefully, we'll be taking it down this week to preserve it because, you know, sprinklers are starting to dig in and all that. So I know a lot of the members of the community stopped by, a lot of took pictures, asked questions. It was really, it was really a substantial benefit. And I want to thank the city for all the help we got to be able to put that up there.
Great, thank you.
And this month, December twentieth, we're going to be presenting the Policeman of the Year Award, EMT of the Year Award, Firefighter of the Year Award. At the BFW, we're going to have a meeting on the twentieth and we'll be presenting those awards. So we have like, they're busy with the BFW.
You looking at me to make sure I don't miss the meeting? They always go, absent. Absent, no. No, I'll be, I'll be there, Councilman.
How many people can go? How many people can attend?
We have a three hundred and fifty capacity, so we're going to do like twenty maybe.
We social distance big time.
The mayor's been to our meetings and, you know, just...
We have to almost dial at each other from press room.
We're going to have a speaker system so people hear everything.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Varona?
No, nothing.
You don't have anything?
No, thank, I just want, I'm grateful for the opportunity to, for the people of Nogales to elect me to the office again. I enjoyed it, but I think it's time for me to move on and do other things in life now. Because, you know, I'm on the ninety-eight yard line of life and I need to do other things now. So, but I thank everybody, all of you, for, first of all, for your friendship. And I want to thank you all for your leadership. I want to thank the staff for being so cooperative and making sure that they were transparent with everything. But I do want to not forget my first mentor because I'm very proud to say that in the ten years that I was here, I only missed one meeting. And I missed that one meeting because I refused to attend the meeting. It was my first year on the council here this time where there was, they wanted the Fourth of July not to be held on the Fourth of July. So I went along with it and then there was so much pressure that he wanted to change it back and he called for a meeting and I refused to attend that meeting. But that's the only, but I do not want to forget very much of Mayor F. D. Foncas because that's who I started with and it was a great learning experience with him. And he gave me a lot of opportunities because during that time, we had a lot of meetings. And I was going to attending the University of Arizona, working on my doctorate degree. And he would al, every time he had a meeting or a special meeting, he always made it a point to call me and ask me, I want to have a meeting there? Do you have a class or something? And I tell him I had to attend class, he would always change the meeting. So that was one of the reasons I attended really all of the meetings and I was able to participate in everything. He had a great value on education. So it's been very, very nice and I have nothing to regret and it's been a wonderful experience with the leadership. And thank you for your friendship, Mayor, and the opportunities that you provided me and everything. But it's been wonderful to work with all of you. It's been just a great learning experience. Even when we traveled, the experience was wonderful and everything. And Madam City Clerk, thank you for keeping me in line to make sure I'm where I'm supposed to be and keeping me organized with the mail and everything like that. Thank you very much. I'm very, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And well, I want to say that first of, first of all, I know, no, no, wait a minute, I got to say something. I just want to say that, you know, I joke a lot with Mr. Hennessy. I joked with him since we started in the city council way, way back. And at one time, we were the only two that probably talked to each other. The rest didn't want to talk to us. So it was hard times for us and you had to experience what him and I went through at the time. And I just want to say that it was, you know, you built some great friendships, you know, and sometimes you have a dialogue that, that seems like it's not going in your way, your direction, and you start feeling a little uncomfortable. But dialogue is good in the council. If you don't have dialogue and you have debate, well, basically, you're just voting like consent agenda. You know, you have to have that, that opportunity. And that's what I got from, from Mr. Varona. And I've always, you know, admired that because he keeps me on my toes. And Mr. Hennessy, even though he's back there all the time, at least this year for the COVID, he's over. But he's always, he calls me every day at seven in the morning. And he keep, you know, somebody's going... He does that every day at seven in the morning. At seven in the morning, he calls me. And that's even Saturdays and Sundays, all right? So I don't know if he's going, I don't know if he's going to continue doing that, but I hope he continues doing that.
Put it on speed dial.
Yeah, yeah. Just, you know, the friendship is there. So with that, Mr. Hennessy, do you have anything to say, sir?
Thank you, though. I do want to thank everybody and I will say this, the last two years, I think there'll be twelve years, including those last, these last two years, the last two years were like part of the best. Everybody seemed to be more logical. Everybody seemed to agree on a lot of things that before we couldn't get anybody to agree. And again, I want to thank everybody here, especially the mayor and everybody here that have been able to be friends together and been able to solve problems without having to take it to a far extreme. And that was the best thing in the last two years, right? And all twelve years were interesting. Like I said, some years had better, better results than other years, but they were all decent, decent, decent. Some years were just out of control. But again, you know, they were, they were interesting. And I'm glad that this group was my last group here and it was very good. And I want to thank everybody here, especially John, who did a wonderful job for all the years that I was here and everybody else. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilman. And I have a few things I want to say that I, on November tenth, I had a Zoom interview with AZ Republic regarding COVID. I also had an interview with Walter Cronkite School of Journalism student regarding the border and the economy. On November seventeenth, I had a meeting, a comprehensive economic development strategic Zoom meeting with Sigo. Very good meeting. November nineteenth, interview with Telemundo, interview was regarding COVID. Same day, radio multimedia interview regarding COVID and border crossing restrictions. And on November the thirtieth, had an interview with Axios telephone interview regarding the low crime rate in the city of Nogales. So it wasn't a very busy month, this, this month. But what kept us busy is the COVID situation. And as you can see, almost everybody that called me regarding COVID is because they noticed the numbers and they're concerned about the border and they're concerned about the economy. They're concerned about, about the border being closed and that, you know, our taxes. So there's, there's several issues there, but basically, all falls in the same thing. So it was, I hope that this month of December, you know, is a better month for all of us and for all the citizens in Nogales. And, you know, this, the month of December is always a very sad month, the way I look at it, you know, even though you can have the best time with your family, your grandchildren, everything, but it's always sad one way or another. So let's just hope that we, we take this COVID situation in a very positive manner and we, social distance, we stay away from large groups. And also, when you cannot social distance, wear a mask and be safe. I want you to be safe. And I'm talking to also everybody that is looking at this on YouTube, please be safe. As the members of the city council, we all want to wish you the best during the holidays. And I don't think we're going to meet again until next year unless something really comes up between now and then. But on behalf of all of us, we want to wish you a Merry Christmas and a very Happy New Year.
And a happy birthday to you.
And thank you very much. It was my birthday, believe it or not. But I'm still younger than Mr. Hennessy. Well, yes.
But this year doesn't count, you know. Nothing that happened this year.
Yeah, that's right. You know, I should go back one year, huh? Yeah, this year shouldn't count for a little bit. Yes. I hope twenty twenty-one is a better year.
So can we have Mr. Hennessy and Mr. Varona back?
You know, what we need to do is get off this COVID and be able to rearrange the chairs again and then maybe we can have Mr. Hennessy and Mr. Varona sit in the front row and throw spinballs at us or I don't know, something. Yeah. Yeah, he, he was, he was down here. He's been getting further and further away from us. I don't know why. John, are you doing something to Mr. Hennessy?
I am not sure.
You're not? Okay. All right. Is there anything else?
Now it's time to say goodbye.
Okay. This means adjourned.
Make sure your agenda here.
Do we have any future agendas? No. All right. This means adjourned.
Right. Merry Christmas.